We'll call this meeting to order. The invocation today will be given by Reverend Katie Harrington from St. Andrews Covenant Presbyterian Church.
Let us pray. Holy One, we come before you this morning with hearts filled with gratitude for the beauty of this day, the beauty of these people, for the community in which we have the opportunity to live and serve and be. Oh God, hold these commissioners and county employees in your hands. You have called them to serve the people of New Hanover County, and we know that that is not an easy task. So give them hearts of love for all people. Give them wisdom as they make difficult decisions, particularly those which they know will cause conflict. Decisions in which there are no easy answers, but still they must decide. Guide their hearts and minds to keep the best interests and safety of all people in mind. Be with all the people of our county, oh God, from the most vulnerable who need much care, and also those who have abundant resources to share. May we all work together to build a peace-filled future in which all have everything we need. And then, when the day is done, grant us peace and rest to strengthen us for a new day to serve you. Surround us all with your peace, your wisdom, and your grace today and every day. We pray in the name of the God who is love. Amen.
Thank you for that lovely prayer. Please join me in facing the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they need to pull off of that?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move to approve 1 through 4, but I'd like to add additional context to number 5 on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number 5 is the adoption of a resolution to dispose of surplus property according to procedures outlined in North Carolina General Statute Chapters 168, Article 12. A couple times a year, aha, hello. A couple times a year, we have the opportunity to dispose of surplus property that we have at the county from different departments. And I always like to put a highlight on this, and especially speaking to those nonprofits that are out there who get first shot at all this disposal, surplus material we're disposing of. And in this particular case, it is filled with office furniture and equipment. And by filled, I mean office desks, office chairs, stackable chairs, cubicles, folding laminate tables, shelving, filing cabinets, dry eraser planning boards, and a 19-foot, 1-inch conference table seating for 16. So I know there are many in this room, and certainly a lot of people out there who are trying to make sure that their new offices or the existing offices are kept as fresh as they can. This is a lot of really good stuff. So please, please contact Sarah Warmuth. That will, and she will give you the number to call. You'll get first chance to take a look at this material and put a bid in on it. And I know they're ready to deal. So don't think that you're kind of out of the market. Come and look at it and put in a bid. Sarah, did I miss anything?
You did not. That covers it.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. Please contact them. And there's a phone number with this, or how do they contact you?
So there is a phone number, but in our, at our last meeting, one of the comments that actually you made and requested, we have a generic email right now that will make it a lot easier. Should anybody be interested, nhcsurplus@nhgov.com. And we'll post that all on the website, too. So if they follow to the website, they'll have the phone number and the email there.
And our website is what?
nhgov.com.
nhgov.com.
I should look at communications to make sure.
Yes, it is.
But yes, all of the information's on the website.
Good. Anything else? Good. Thank you very much. And with that, Mr. Chair, I move we pass number 5 on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is adoption of a resolution opposing the expansion of the Kemore's Fayetteville Works Facility.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. This is a resolution opposing the expansion of Kemore's Fayetteville Works Facility. This is an important one. Please pay attention. I know it's a little lengthy, a lot of important information. Whereas the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners recognizes that safe, clean, and reliable drinking water is essential to the health and well-being of county residents and to the long-term environmental and economic vitality of our region. And whereas the Cape Fear River serves as the primary drinking water source for residents of New Hanover County and neighboring communities, supporting approximately 500,000 North Carolinians. And whereas since at least 1980, Kemore's and its predecessor Dupont have released per- and polyfluorale alkal substances, also known as PFAS, including Gen-X into the Cape Fear River from the Fayetteville Works Facility located upstream from New Hanover County. And whereas these discharges have resulted in widespread PFOS contamination throughout the Cape Fear River Basin, creating serious concerns about public health, environmental quality, and the financial burden placed on local utilities and ratepayers to provide safe drinking water as peer-reviewed studies have identified potential associations between long-term PFOS exposure and certain adverse health effects, including increased risks of some cancers, thyroid, liver conditions, and developmental and immune system impacts. And whereas the ratepayers of Cape Fear Public Utility Authority and its regional partners have invested tens of millions of dollars in treatment upgrades, including the installation of a granulated activated carbon, or GAC, filtration system, and continue to bear significant annual operating costs to remove PFOS compounds from the water supply. And whereas Kemore's has applied to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for a permit to expand operations at its Fayetteville Works Facility, which would substantially increase production and has the potential to increase PFOS emissions and discharges. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, and other regulatory agencies have the authority and the responsibility to deny permit applications that may endanger public health or violate federal or state environmental laws. And whereas the Board of Commissioners strongly supports continued oversight by the EPA and DEQ to ensure Kemore's achieves full compliance with existing consent orders and implements proven and verifiable controls to prevent additional PFOS contamination. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners formally opposes any expansion of the Kemore's Fayetteville Works Facility that would result in increased PFOS emissions or discharges into the Cape Fear River Basin. And be it further resolved that the Board respectfully requests that the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to deny Kemore's current expansion permit unless and until the company has, number 1, fully remediated existing contamination; number 2, demonstrated sustained compliance with all applicable environmental laws, consent orders, and permit conditions; and number 3, provided independent verifiable data confirming that proposed operations will not increase PFOS releases to air or water; and number 4, provide documentation of financial compensation to local governments and public utility organizations for treatment systems and remediation measures implemented as a result of PFOS contamination in the public water supply. Be it further resolved that the Board urges Kemore's to engage transparently with local governments, utilities, and affected communities to share environmental data, adopt best available control technologies, and prioritize the protection of North Carolina residents and natural resources. Adopted the 17th day of November 2025 by William E. Rivenbark, Chair.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number 7 is the adoption of a resolution opposing the Fuquay Varina Inter Basin Transfer and Request for Additional Comment.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'd be happy to read this one, although I have made, tried to cut. It's a very lengthy resolution.
It can't be as lengthy as one year.
Yeah, excuse me?
It can't be as lengthy as one year.
Yeah, no, actually, I tried to reduce it so that we could get the meat and the main understanding of what the resolution is about. So the full resolution will be available on our website, and people can go to that. But here, here we go. Resolution opposing the Fuquay Varina Inter Basin Transfer and Request for Additional Comment. Whereas on September 1st, 2020, the town of Fuquay Varina submitted a notice of intent to request an inter-basin transfer, or IBT, requesting an average day transfer of approximately 4 million gallons per day and a maximum day transfer of 8 million gallons a day from the Cape Fear River Basin to the Neuse River Basin. And whereas over five years after submitting the notice of intent, the town released a draft environmental impact statement identifying a preferred alternative of sourcing water from the Tri-Rivers Water Treatment Plant in the Cape Fear River Basin and seeking approval to transfer 6.17 million gallons a day from the Cape Fear River Basin to the Neuse River Basin. The DEIS is nearly 2,000 pages. And whereas the town's DEIS does not account for any of the 6.17 million gallons per day to be returned from the benefiting Neuse River Basin to the impacted Cape Fear River Basin at any time. Whereas the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, Brunswick County, Pender County, and the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority collectively, the Cape Fear River Basin Water Utilities rely upon the Cape Fear River as the source of their raw water to serve their communities. And whereas the potential impacts of the communities served by the Cape Fear River Basin Water Utilities include increased risk of water shortages during periods of drought, less potential future economic development opportunities, and reduced water flow or quality for recreational use. And whereas although the communities served by the Cape Fear River Basin Utilities will be detrimentally impacted by the IBT certificate request, those communities benefiting from the request will be positioned for growth and increased economic development. And whereas in July of 2024, the Authority submitted public records request to DEQ requesting documents related to the town's IBT certificate request. And on October 23rd, 2025, 15 months after the public records request was submitted, DEQ provided thousands of pages of additional documents in response to the Authority's public records request. And whereas although the town required five years to develop its DEIS, and DEQ required 15 months to fulfill a public records request, the Authority will have only three months within which to review thousands of pages of engineering and environmental records and conduct its own independent analysis. Whereas furthermore, on November 4th, 2025, announcements stated that the EMC, that's Environmental Management Committee, Commission, would hold a series of public hearings regarding the town's DEIS to be held on December 4th, 2025, in Fayetteville, North Carolina; December 9th, 2025, in Raleigh; and December 11th, 2025, in Pittsboro, North Carolina. Whereas despite the substantial impact of the town's DEIS and IBT certificate request to the Cape Fear Public Water Utilities, the closest hearing location is nearly 100 miles away in Fayetteville, North Carolina. And whereas due process requires that those impacted be offered both notice and an opportunity to be heard, the locations of the hearings are centrally located to the beneficiaries of the town's IBT certificate request, but do not provide the same access and opportunity to be heard by impacted communities, particularly the Cape Fear Basin Water Utilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners opposes the town of Fuquay Varina's IBT certificate request and draft environmental impact statement as submitted and amended. And be it further resolved that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners opposes any IBT certificate request affecting the Cape Fear River Basin that does not account for the return of the water so removed. And respectfully requests, number 1, that the North Carolina Environmental Quality Management Commission to allow the Cape Fear Basin Water Utilities additional time to respond and submit comments to the DEIS and requested IBT certificate. Counsel further requests that any extension of time be commensurate with the delay between when information was requested by the Cape Fear Basin Utilities and when it was actually delivered. And number 2, the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission to hold an additional 4th public hearing on the draft environmental impact statement in New Hanover County during the month of December 2025 to allow the public to attend and provide relevant comments on the DEIS and requested IBT certificate. Adopted the 17th day of November by William E. Rivenbark, Chair. I move to pass this resolution.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, can I just say a couple things? I'll be brief. In summary, they're going to take 6 million gallons a day out of our river and not put it back. Also, there are portions of our state that are currently in a drought. We have farmers. And 3, it's going to potentially concentrate more of the PFOS poison that's coming down to us through the river. So I just think this is a bad idea. I know this was a long resolution, but it was worth putting all the details in it to let you all know that we need to advocate to oppose this as a community. So I appreciate Commissioners Apple putting this out there for everyone to know and to be able to take action on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Warmuth.
Okay, now it's time for service awards.
Commissioners, good morning. Happy to report that we don't have any retirees to recognize this morning. That's institutional knowledge that we always regret seeing leave. And fortunately, this month, we don't carry that burden. So the moratorium on retirements is working. I like to say this. We do have service awards this morning. And between the five years, all the way to 30 years, we've got about 120 years of combined service that we're going to recognize this morning. And so when I call your name, if you would, please come forward. I'd like to be the first to shake your hand and thank you. And I think 120 years of combined service deserves really, really loud rounds of applause when we recognize each person this morning. And so we'll begin with five years. And in the Department of Social Services, Crystal Edwards. Crystal, congratulations. Thank you for being with us. Commissioners, also with five years of service in the Department of Social Services, Ashley Huckins. Ashley, thank you and congratulations. Commissioners, we've got one person to recognize this morning in 10 years of service, also in the Department of Social Services, Daniel Willis. Daniel, thank you, sir, for what you do. Congratulations. Commissioners, excited to recognize folks that have reached, I think, a very significant milestone. And that's 15 years of service. And for many people, that's half a career in a local government. So we're so thankful these folks are on the team, but more importantly, that they're still with us and will be here, I think, for the long haul as well. And so the first in the library this morning, Krista Dean. Krista, thank you. Thank you for what you do. Congratulations on at least a half a career. Also with 15 years of service in finance, Keith Harbin. Keith, thank you and congratulations. Commissioners, with 15 years of service, all in the library, also in the library, Scooter Hayes. Scooter, congratulations. Thank you. Commissioners, also with 15 years of service in the Health Department, Leslie Houston. Leslie, congratulations. Thank you. Commissioners, with 15 years of service in facilities management, Nick Leary. Nick, congratulate, he keeps the Government Center running effectively and well. Commissioners, we're going to accelerate the timeline here. We've got one person to recognize this morning with 30 years of service. This is not a retirement. This is 30 years of incredible dedicated service, still coming to work, to work for the Board every day in finance, Katrina Morris. Katrina, congratulations. A career. The Commissioners, about 120 years of combined service, the best of the best. I think every one of those folks deserves another round of applause. Please, please. Yes, sir. And so Commissioners, we've got one additional recognition this morning. It's someone who's joined the team, and I don't want to say it incorrectly, but I think it's rejoining the team in Social Services, Shakia Williams. Shakia, you would stand up. Welcome back, right? Welcome back. Thank you. So Commissioners, that concludes recognitions this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before we move into the next section, I'd just like to note that one of our fellow Commissioners from over in Brunswick County, Marty Cook, is here in the audience today. Welcome, Marty. Thank you for coming.
Okay, the next one is the consideration of a resolution recognizing the General Federation of Women's Clubs, GFWC, North Carolina Cerosis, for 130 years of service to New Hanover County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Sharon Lane Smith. Please come up and bring anyone you'd like up with you. I'm going to read this resolution, and then would you please make some remarks to the Commission? Thank you so much for being here. The New Hanover County Board of Commissioners, a resolution recognizing the General Federation of Women's Clubs, GFWC, North Carolina Cerosis, for 130 years of service to New Hanover County. Incredible. Whereas in December 1895, three friends and a group of 15 young women established North Carolina Cerosis, the first federated women's club in North Carolina, and a member of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, GFWC. And whereas, North Carolina Cerosis is composed of women from diverse backgrounds united by a shared commitment to improving lives and strengthening communities through volunteer service. And whereas, for 130 years, North Carolina Cerosis has enriched the citizens of New Hanover County by championing education through the support of libraries and scholarships, preserving the environment, promoting healthy lifestyles, advocating for the elderly, survivors of domestic violence, individuals with disabilities, and those experiencing homelessness, advancing issues affecting women, children, and families, and uplifting the arts. All very important work. Thank you. And whereas, North Carolina Cerosis has collaborated on numerous initiatives within New Hanover County, including with the Public Library, Cape Fear Museum, and Greenfield Lake, and continues to invest in future generations by funding scholarships at the University of North Carolina at Wilmington and Cape Fear Community College. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes and commends the General Federation of Women's Clubs, GFWC, North Carolina Cerosis, for 130 years of unwavering service, leadership, and dedication to the betterment of our community. Adopted the 17th day of November 2025, William E. Rivenbark, Chair. Thank you very much for allowing me to read this. Will you please make some remarks?
Good morning. My name is Sharon Smith, and I'm honored to serve as the President of GFWC, North Carolina. I'm joined today by several of our dedicated members, including the Ninth Department Chairman Nancy Baden. Thank you, Chair Rivenbark, Vice Chair Pierce, and the Commissioners for your support of our community and for considering recognizing our milestone that is deeply meaningful to us, 130 years of community service. It's both a privilege and a joy to reflect on the remarkable legacy of North Carolina Cerosis, a legacy that was built on a vision and determination. In November of 1985, three women gathered in downtown Wilmington and had a bold idea. Little could they have imagined that they would ignite a movement, a movement that has never dimmed. Today's Cerosis is more than 90 members strong. Through our numbers, we have grown, but our purpose remains unchanged. We continue to be a beacon of hope, a catalyst for change, and a champion of causes. To our community partners, we thank them for walking beside us as we build a better tomorrow. And to each of you, thank you for joining and celebrating this extraordinary group of women. We're deeply gratitude for your support as we honor 130 years of dedication, leadership, and love for the community. As Jane Goodall so wisely reminded us, what you do makes a difference and what you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make. So I'm here to tell you that North Carolina Cerosis has made that choice, and we remain committed to making a difference that matters. So here's to 100 years of impact in the community and all the years that are yet to come for us. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Very lovely, indeed. Here's two hundred and thirty years with that, and I imagine there may be some other remarks. I will go ahead and move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would y'all come up and take a photo with us, please?
Next is a consideration of Adoption Awareness Month. Commissioner.
Me. Commissioner, me.
Commissioner, me.
Hi, ladies. I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record, and I'll let you have some comments afterwards. New Hanover County Board of Commissioners, Adoption Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas every child deserves the opportunity to grow up in a loving, stable family, however many children across America face circumstances where their parents or unwilling or unable to provide adequate care. And whereas more than seventy thousand four hundred twenty-one children in the United States, two thousand four hundred and sixteen children in North Carolina, and twenty-seven children in New Hanover County are currently in the county's foster care program and waiting for permanent adoptive families. And whereas for children who have lost their birth families, adoption can provide a secure home, parental love, nurturing, and stability, meeting essential needs that would otherwise go unmet. And whereas the future of North Carolina depends on today's children, and our state remains committed to helping every child reach their full potential within supportive family environments. And whereas North Carolina encourages its citizens, community agencies, faith-based organizations, businesses, and others to celebrate adoption, honor families who grow through adoption, and draw attention to children who face uncertain futures as they await permanent homes. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that November twenty twenty-five is hereby declared Adoption Awareness Month in New Hanover County, adopted this seventeenth day of November, 2025, by William E. Rievenbark, Chair. Thank you very much. Please take the floor.
Thank you. My name is Tiffany Bickel. I'm a supervisor with New Hanover County for adoptions, and I'm here with Holly Royals, our Assistant Director. And we wanted to thank you for reading the proclamation and acknowledging this as Adoption Month in the month of November. We like to take this month to celebrate and honor the families that have adopted children out of foster care in New Hanover County, and also we view it as a call to action to continue to seek those adoptive homes for the children that are in need. So thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and adopt? Yes, I move to adopt the Adoption Awareness Month proclamation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Y'all come up and get your picture, ma'am.
And next is our very own Madeline Womper. It's all yours.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me today. It's a really exciting day for the county. I'm excited to share with you the county's first ever countywide sustainability assessment. And before I dive in, I just want to take a minute to thank all of the department heads at the county for taking the time to meet with me and for just ushering this important work forward. And although this was a one hundred and twenty-day assessment, I absolutely could have kept going, listening, learning, but at some point, we have to press pause and reflect, and that's what I'm here to present to you today. So the purpose of this assessment is to recognize and honor the sustainability work already happening at the county, identify shared priorities, and recommend practical steps that will help position the county to meet our long-term resilience, environmental, and economic goals. Over the past several months, I spent more than sixty-five hours in conversations, both listening and learning. This included fifteen external meetings with partners, such as the city, UNC Wilmington, state agencies, local environmental organizations, and developers. Internally, I met with every county department, and in that time, I identified more than one hundred and fifty active and recently completed sustainability-related initiatives. That is something the county should be very proud of and speaks to how much is already being done in this space. For your reference, that list can be found in Appendix A of the assessment document. So the assessment is organized into three main sections. First, we look at how the county compares to peer counties. Next, we dive into findings and opportunities across key focus areas, and then we wrap up with some immediate next steps and looking ahead. So the first section is the comparative landscape, which takes a look at how peer counties are integrating sustainability across their core operations. So for this assessment, I selected six peer counties throughout North Carolina and our sister county, Chatham, Georgia. These counties were chosen because they are part of the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network, and they have a dedicated sustainability staff. And I do want to point out that New Hanover County is the only coastal county in North Carolina with a dedicated sustainability staff. Through this comparison, I found that peer counties typically have formal sustainability policies, clear goals and targets, and advisory boards. New Hanover County has a strong foundation with our existing plans and policies and unique coastal leadership, but we have fewer formal policies and tracking mechanisms than our peers. Our opportunity now is to adopt best practices from other counties that make sense for our coastal context, such as defining our sustainability identity, communicating our work more broadly, and aligning with state goals. Our unique coastal risks require a tailored approach, and I want to be very mindful of that in the work that I do here at the county and when we compare ourselves to others. So moving on to the next section of the assessment is our focus area findings and opportunities. For this section, I will walk through the five focus areas that I felt best captured sustainability at the county, which you may notice also nicely mirrors the county's strategic plan. These focus areas are land use and environmental stewardship, community health, governance, operations, and resilience. This part of the assessment shows where we're making progress and where we have room to grow. So on this slide, I'm going to walk you through a very high-level overview of the findings, and much more detail can be found in the assessment document. So in reviewing our sustainability efforts, I found that the county has a strong foundation in land use and environmental stewardship, with solid plans and conservation policies already in place. Our wellness and public health programs are well-integrated, but there's room to make these resources more visible and accessible. For governance and coordination, departments are already collaborating effectively, though we could benefit from more formal coordination tools, such as shared dashboards and regular roundtable meetings. Operationally, we're seeing the county do more with less. We're making progress with energy efficiency, emissions reductions, and waste reduction, but additional innovation and tracking would help us go further. And finally, our resilience work is very active, especially in flood mitigation and hazard preparedness. But centralizing risk data and restarting our resilience working group would strengthen these efforts. So in summary, although there are many growth opportunities, the county should be very proud of the work it has done across these main focus areas. Sustainability is already deeply embedded across the organization, and I have a very strong foundation to work from. So now that I've shared the focus area findings and opportunities, I'll outline next steps and to look ahead of how we can build on this work. So right now, we are in the foundation phase, documenting what we have accomplished and starting to track our progress. To move into action, I've highlighted some priority recommendations from Appendix B of the assessment, shown here on this slide. These include short-term steps like creating a definition of sustainability for the county, strengthening communications, continuing to advance Western Bank Conservation, and launching a sustainability working group. Medium-term goals include updating the sustainability and utility policy, updating our conservation mapping and priority tools, and setting green space targets. These next steps will help us build momentum, demonstrate progress, and measure our impact as we move forward. In closing, it is clear that New Hanover County, as a coastal community, has a longstanding legacy of sustainability and resiliency. This assessment recognizes that work and identifies opportunities to further align our actions with the county's vision of a vibrant, prosperous, and diverse coastal community committed to building a sustainable future for generations to come. As a sustainability manager, I look forward to coordinating these efforts across departments and leading with locally grounded solutions. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing my presentation today and for your ongoing support and vision for sustainability at the county. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Anybody have anything?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Madeline, I want to thank you for the amount of work that you put into this. I had the opportunity to go through it, and I was very impressed. Your overview today is very high-level, and I would encourage anybody in the public and also on our staff who has not seen or read the entire report to please do so. You really lifted up a lot of areas of positivity within our county, which is great, but also identified some areas where we have some work to do, and I really appreciated that. I would say the overall theme that I got from this was more visible and accessible, if I was. And to that, I noted three different areas that I think, I hope that we will move aggressively in. One is the Capital Project Sustainability Checklist. What a great idea. It's very simple to do and implement, and will pay dividends with every project that we do. Another one is the dashboard, creating a sustainability dashboard that is very accessible to the public and also for different departments. So anytime, you can check and see where we're at on our commitments, on our targets, and our goals, which will come along with all of those. And the third one is the bringing back the resilience working group. It's so important for us internally to talk to each other, and this is a perfect way to do it and move forward with now what you've given us as a full roadmap on how to do it to take us to further resilience.
Yes, sir.
So we've never had anybody like you, Madeline, and I'm really appreciative of you putting a highlight on all these topics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Mr. Chair. I echo, thank you very much. This is a very good report. The clear, there are some clear things that we can start doing, we need to do. But it starts with a definition. The definition, we have to define it, definitely, but we also have to have the political will to uphold it. That's what it takes, I think, sometimes to make sure that we are upholding the things that we define as important to us. About three of us attended the Water Summit last week. I know you were there, some staff were there, and I think with the storms that we are having lately, or probably from now to the future, it's important to the entire state, but it starts with defining it, it starts with having a plan, and I like that we're going in that direction. And I just want to end this with saying, you know, in case people don't know, we are surrounded by water. We have river, we have an ocean, we have watersheds, we have wetlands. They are all important to our area, and this is not just about trees. Trees are absolutely important, they soak up a lot of water, but this is about our economy, it's about our safety, and that's what I think about every time we're looking at rezonings. And I'll be honest, it kind of gives me pause when I see that, you know, the issue that we're facing, because water levels are rising, and we have to be mindful of that and what's coming for us in the next twenty-five-plus years. So I thank you, and I'm looking forward to working with you and learning more about what you're doing, what you think we should do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Just a comment. Thank you for the presentation, Madeline. And for the public, you know, I got to tell you, when we first created this position, what, a year ago, two years? One year ago? I wondered how it would go, and I want to say it's gone very well. You know, Mel and I have had the opportunity to work together, and we had the issue with the crabbing issues that came up, and Madeline said, what do you think I need to do? I said, you need to go down there and talk to the fishermen, and she did. And that is a tough group, and I think they've invited her back like four or five times now, and she's built a great relationship with those folks, and that's very important to hear firsthand in our community what their needs are. You've been down to the Inlet Association, you're at the Waters Conference, you come through our Port and Waterway, and as Commissioner Walker said, we are surrounded by water. This is a very important issue for us, and I'm surprised to see that so few counties actually have that, especially ones that are so ingrained and have such a coastal community. So thank you, and Mel and I have had a great relationship. She's done everything I ask her to do, and that's about all we can ask for. So appreciate it and look forward to more from you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Madeline, I also want to join in saying thank you. Sustainability is a very high priority for New Hanover County, its Commissioners, in putting our budget together. Last year, creating this position was a testament to us trying to prioritize just that concept, and not only to do better, but to help put under one office, one position, some of what we're already doing, which is part of what you helped to highlight today, which is very important. This is not a new concept in New Hanover County. We very much care about these issues. Certainly, there are improvements to be made, but specifically calling out what we're already doing is very important, because sometimes that gets left off to the side. And I finally want to thank you, because I think that one of the things that you do a really good job with is being pragmatic and practical in your approach to this work, because obviously there are lots of ideas and concepts, some of them are pie in the sky and not achievable, but you really drill down on the things that we can do, and that is to be committed. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Madeline.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Eric Cradle, the presentation of the year in FY twenty-five and quarter one, FY twenty-six results.
Good morning, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This agenda item is to review the financial results of the county for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, 2025, and for the first quarter of the new fiscal year that began on July the first. This will also include an update of the hospital sale escrows. As an overview, the county's financial position remains sound. At eighteen point three percent, our unassigned fund balance, general fund fund balance remains in the targeted range for the county, while the results of all other funds were in line with expectations. And in June, we were again assigned a triple-A bond rating from the major credit agencies of Standard and Poor's and Moody's. As it relates to the general fund, at a high level, and as we will see in more detail in a moment, total revenues exceeded budget, with both property tax revenue and sales tax revenue slightly exceeding expectations. On the expenditure side, actual expenses were less than budget but exceeded revenues due to high levels of capital expenditures. The capital expenditures were all planned and appropriately budgeted. This slide provides more detail. The red bar for each year is actual revenue, while the blue bar is the budgeted revenue. You can see in fiscal year twenty-five that the actual revenue of three hundred and ninety-five million exceeded the budget of three hundred and ninety-three million, by two million dollars. Several of the variances are noted to the right. Property tax revenue came in, what, two point four million dollars over budget, and after falling behind earlier in the And after falling behind earlier in the fiscal year, sales taxes recovered nicely in the last six months and ultimately exceeded budget by $713,000. Intergovernmental revenue was $1.7 million under budget, which is primarily due to the timing of carrying out several grants, with the lower revenue being offset dollar for dollar by lower associated expenses. The green line on the chart is our expenditures. You can see that expenditures came in very close to revenue in fiscal year '23 and '24, while in fiscal year '25, you can see a gap with total expenditures of $432 million versus the revenue of $395 million, a variance of $37 million that we will now review in a little more detail. First, as background, everything presented is being presented as it's required to be appear in our audited financial statements as it relates to the general fund, which includes the two hospitals' sale escrows, and thus, expenses paid from those escrows are reflected in the total expenses of the general fund. With that in mind, in evaluating the $37 million in expenditures that exceeded revenue, $28 million of those costs related to the four projects listed here, including Project Race Direct Cost, the Flossy Bryan property acquisition, repairs to New Hanover High School, and programs funded by the Mental Health and Substance Use Disorder Fund. Those expenditures were all carefully planned, and importantly, as part of that plan, as shown at the bottom, almost all of those expenditures came from sources other than unassigned fund balance, which is the portion of fund balance that is used to compute our fund balance percentage that drives our policy. Thus, while the total general fund balance declined in fiscal year '2025 by $9 million, the county's unassigned fund balance actually increased by $5.7 million during the year from $73.6 million to $79.3 million. Using that unassigned fund balance, the fund balances from the prior slide, this slide shows our fund balance percentage of each of the last two fiscal year ends. Our fund balance percentage at June 30th, 2025 was 18.3%, an increase from 18.2% in the prior year. The minimum fund balance for both the county and by the local government commission policy is 8%, while our targeted range is 16.7% to 21%. So our percentage is more than twice the minimum and well within the targeted range. While the prior slide showed a 7.7% increase in total fund balance, the fund balance shown on this slide was a more modest, the percentage was more modest at 0.1%. The formula for determining fund balance is shown here, and it's calculated by dividing the fund balance dollar amount by the total amount of expenditures. So higher expenditures have the impact of lowering the fund balance percentage. The $28 million in capital expenditures just discussed are included in the denominator and impacted the percentage by about 1.3%, just those four expenditures, again, which were all planned for and budgeted. Additionally, LGC rules require that the $8.4 million in fund balance that was budgeted to be spent in fiscal year '26 must go ahead and be reserved for and deducted from the unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2025. The good news is that this conservative approach results in the budgeted usage already being included in 18.3% amount. We've effectively prepaid that approximately 2% impact. We still have the strong fund balance percentage of 18.3%. This slide shows a six-year history of our unassigned fund balance, which was just discussed and is shown in blue, and also includes the green portion, which is our greater than 21% fund balance that we set aside in prior years. You can see that the green portion has declined in recent years, which primarily relates to funds spent on Project Race Direct Cost and capital for the county schools, including the New Hanover High School repairs. Our remaining greater than 21% fund balance amounts to approximately $5.7 million, with the majority of that balance being assigned to the last remaining New Hanover High School repairs that had not been paid out at June 30th of 2025. Next is an update on our hospital sale escrows. As a reminder, when the hospital was sold to Navant in November 2021, the county received a total of $350 million. Of that amount, $300 million was established as the Revenue Stabilization Fund. The asset purchase agreement lists examples of its possible use that are shown here, including debt retirement, capital, a reserve for emergencies to address budget shortfalls during economic downturns and minimization of tax and fee increases. Since being established, the primary use of the fund has been to transfer earned investment interest income to the general fund to support county operations, which aligns with the last bullet. The other 50 million was used to establish a mental health and substance use disorder fund, with examples provided as shown, including capital for treatment programs, grant funding, and expanding mental health services. To date, this fund has been used primarily to carry out a variety of mental health and substance use programs, as well as therapists and nurses for the county schools. This slide provides an update on the Revenue Stabilization Fund. The balance of the fund is $293.8 million at June 30th. Other than the transfer of interest to the general fund, the only use of this fund in fiscal year '25 was to acquire the Flossy Bryan property, which was structured as a loan and is being repaid by the general fund back to the Revenue Stabilization Fund over five years. Next, this slide shows the composition of the assets of this fund. At June 30th, 2025, this fund held almost $20 million in cash, earning a rate of 4.2% and has $274 million in government-backed bonds with a weighted average yield of 2.28%. The relatively low interest rate on the bonds is a result of receiving the hospital proceeds in 2021 and investing them during the very low interest rate environment that was in effect at the time. The funds were invested at that time in a 10-year laddering strategy, with 1/10 of the funds invested in one-year maturities, 1/10 invested in two-year maturities, and so on up to 10 years. As maturities occur each year, we're able to reinvest those proceeds received at the much higher interest rates that are now in effect. This slide shows an example of the yield we received on a bond purchased in 2021, 0.75%. And a more recent bond we purchased earlier this year at 4.27%. Unfortunately, we are stuck with the low-yielding bonds that were purchased years ago unless we want to sell them at a loss, which would reduce the principal of the fund. This slide illustrates the improvement in yields and investment income we've been able to realize as the bonds mature, and we reinvest the proceeds at the higher interest rates now in effect. As it relates to the Revenue Stabilization Fund, which is the red bar, you can see that in the first full year of investment, which was fiscal year '22, we earned $2.2 million in interest, which was a 0.73% yield. Since that time, you can see the impact of being able to invest proceeds from matured bonds into the higher post-COVID interest rate environment. The mental health fund investments mirror the revenue stabilization are shown here in the blue bars, and they follow the same trend. As it relates to the Mental Health and Substance Use Disorder Fund, it currently has 44.4 million in assets. For fiscal year '26, we have budgeted to spend $9.7 million for the purposes shown, and the last line notes that at the current run rate, it would likely be depleted sometime in 2030. Next is an update on the first quarter of fiscal year '26. As a reminder, this is a pie chart showing our general fund budgeted revenues for the year. Property taxes generate 58% of our total revenue, and sales taxes are 23%, so 81% comes from those two sources. The third largest source of income is intergovernmental income with a budget of $39.3 million. A substantial portion of that income flows through from the federal government, which is recently shut down for six weeks. Fortunately, the federal government is now back open, and the impact of the county, while it was closed, was not material to the county from a financial aspect. This slide shows a history of our property tax rate over the last five years. As you remember, this was a revaluation year, and the large increase in property values enabled the county to reduce the property tax rate from $0.45 per $100 of assessed value to $0.30. That is currently the fifth lowest property tax rate in the state. To the right is a list of select counties that may be of interest because of their proximity or size. As noted at the bottom, property tax bills were mailed out during the summer and can be paid without interest since January 5th of next year. The county's peak collection period is typically December and January. This slide presents a snapshot of our financial results. A green circle indicates that the line item of the fund is generally performing at or above expectations. A yellow circle indicates a need for close monitoring, while a red circle would be more of a clear negative. As shown on this slide, we have two general fund items marked with yellow circles for ongoing monitoring. First is property taxes. Thus far this year, we are under budget on property taxes by $1.4 million. We believe this is partly due to property tax bills being mailed out approximately three weeks later than the prior year as a result of issues we experienced with software that is subscribed from a vendor that assists us in the mailing process. Additionally, there is uncertainty about the impact of appeals arising from this year's revaluation. As it relates to expenditures, while it's early in the year, this has been marked as yellow because we are tracking $4.9 million higher than last year in expenses, and we are also under budget by less than we were at the same point last year. One factor impacting this is the lagged nature of many of the position eliminations targeted for this year. While position reductions targeted for the year have been met and have been layered in as crudely as possible, we do have partial year salaries and lump-sum vacation payouts payable at departure that are impacting fiscal year. Also, because some of the eliminated positions were vacant, the adjustment in our budget that accounts for vacancies is impacted for a period of time. The other factors noted is that while still early, we are seeing unfavorable trend in employee medical costs thus far this year. We have a self-insured plan, and so our results are directly impacted by fluctuations in that expense. There are two line items shown in green that are under budget, but are still shown in green. The line item, intergovernmental revenue, can vary based on timing of payments and expenditures that result in corresponding grant revenue. As an example, a $1.1 million payment from the state was recorded as revenue this year in October, which is after the cutoff for this year's report, but was in September of last year's report. And while solid sales taxes revenue does not appear in the September 30th results due to the three-month standard lag in receipts, that line item is slightly under budget, but is also shaded green. More information on that is on this slide. This slide provides up-to-date information on sales tax revenue. It shows that for the first two months of the fiscal year, which is all we've received thus far this year, we've received $21.2 million in sales taxes, which is under expectations of $21.4 million, but just slightly. And compared to the prior two years, we are higher by $700,000 and $300,000 respectively. Additionally, we know from the underlying detail that we get from the state that sales tax refunds for July this year were exceptionally high, at $1.4 million. Sales taxes refunds negatively impact receipts and are erratic, but each year, we typically have two months of large refunds, while July 2025 was one of those months. In each of the two prior years, I'm sorry, in each of the two prior years, refunds were low for the month shown. So being ahead of prior years thus far this year in the face of high refunds is a positive indicator. For these reasons, I think we are in good shape at this point in the year on sales taxes. The next few slides present information related to the county's significant funds. This slide presents the highest level of financial review for the general fund, with all revenue presented as a single bar on the left of the chart for the period shown and all expenditures on the right side. Total revenue thus far in fiscal year '26 has amounted to $59.3 million compared to a budget of $59.1 million in the prior year of $58.3 million, so those are all favorable revenue variances. Total expenditures for the first three months of fiscal year '26 amounted to $96.8 million, which is favorable compared to the budget of $98.5 million, but it's more than the $92 million in the prior year and the $89.2 million in the year before that. Each year, because a portion of our budget expenditures near year-end do not occur to the following year, we always expect and need to be under budget during the year. And while we are in the budget this year, we are under budget by less than we were at this time in the prior year. A moment ago, I discussed some of the factors that are playing a part in that. This slide provides more detail on general fund revenue. Property tax revenue received through September 30th amounted to $42.9 million compared to a budget of $44.3 million and the prior year of $41.4 million. I previously discussed the timing of the mailing of the invoices and the potential impact of appeals. The other revenue category shown on the right side of the chart shows actual receipts of $16.4 million compared to a budget of $14.8 million and the prior year actual of $16.9 million. Offsetting factors impacting this item for the current year relate to endowment income for non-county agency grants that did not occur in prior years but has been received this year, and lower intergovernmental revenue thus far this year, which was discussed earlier. As we saw two slides ago, our expenditures to date of $96.8 million are tracking under budget by $1.7 million compared to $92 million a year ago. Through the first quarter of the year, the county has expended 21.6% of its budget, which is slightly higher than the 21.2% in the prior year. This bar chart, the bar charts on the slide also show expenditures by government functions. The most noteworthy variance is that the general government, which is the middle set of graphs, shows being over budget by $1.3 million, while the other three primary functions are under budget by between $400,000 and $1 million each. Those variances between functions are largely due to relatively minor changes in the way some of the home office expenses get allocated. This slide provides an outlook of factors that may impact our unassigned general fund balance this year. One very positive factor that occurred after quarter end is that we sold the building at 319 North Third Street to Cape Fear Community College, which we purchased and leased to the college several years ago to expand their nursing program. The sales price of $10.375 million matched our original purchase price, and those funds were deposited to our general fund balance on October 31st, 2025. While this transaction had been planned, the timing of it was unknown due to uncertainty as to when CFCC would receive the funds to enable the purchase, and thus, this revenue was not budgeted originally in fiscal year '26. Also shown on this slide are possible headwinds that I've previously discussed related to property tax revenue, personal expense, and medical cost. The Environmental Management Fund funds itself without taxes by charging a fee for its services. As shown here, revenue of $3.9 million matches the prior year and is higher than the budget of $3.5 million. Tonnage received at the landfill for the three months ended September 30th, 2025 totaled 104,000 tons, which was just slightly less than 105,000 tons in the prior year. As it relates to expenditures, you can see the right chart shows $3.4 million of actual expenditures for the first quarter of the year, which is under the budget of $3.9 million and also under the budget of $4.1 million. The variance to budget is due to all major line items tracking under budget thus far this year, while the variance to the prior year is primarily due to a large capital purchase made early in the prior fiscal year, whereas so far this fiscal year, capital expenditures have been fairly small. As it relates to fire services, at this point in the year, virtually all of its revenue is derived from property taxes, which was, as discussed earlier, is running just slightly below budget. The large increase in revenue compared to the prior year is due to this year's property revaluation without a corresponding tax rate change in order to provide revenue for a new fire station and additional staffing. All major categories of expense are running under budget thus far this year. It is expected that this gap will narrow once the new stations open and once a budgeted new fire truck is purchased. This is the fifth year of the county providing stormwater services to the unincorporated county and the fourth full year of full service charges being charged. The fees are included in the property tax bills and thus follow a similar pattern of receipt as property taxes. The stormwater fee charged to citizens in the unincorporated county is unchanged from the prior year, and as you can see on the left-hand side of the chart, total revenue is consistent among the years presented. Expenditures of $800,000 thus far this year are the same as the prior two years. This slide shows a budget of $1.5 million. Two large projects, the Courtney Pines Culvert replacement and the Stormwater Department's office building renovation, have had minimal expenses thus far in this year, with those costs expected to occur later in the year. This slide relates to the debt service fund. Revenue for this fund is primarily property taxes, sales taxes, and transfers from the general fund. Due to timing, those revenue sources are fairly low at this point at each fiscal year. Expenditures in this fund are made according to the repayment schedules of the underlying debt. Everything is tracking in line with expectations. Thank you, and that concludes my prepared comments. I'm available for any questions that may have arisen.
Mr. Zeppl? Eric, thank you for that.
Eric, thank you for that really comprehensive report. There's a lot packed into there. I just had a couple of clarifying questions. I'd like to go back to near the top of your report here. If I see this, read it right, and you mentioned in your report that basically we spent 37 million dollars more than revenues coming in. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And 25 million of that was funded from other sources, not from the unassigned fund balance. You may have said it, but I didn't understand it, where the additional 12 million dollars was covered from. Where, you know, if I take 37 and back out 25, I end up with 12 million. Where did that 12 million come from?
I really focused on what the four primary items that made up the 37 million dollars. I don't know what made up that remaining gap there off the top of my head.
Would it be Cape Fear Community College?
Sir?
Would it be the community college, the money we got back from that? That's about the same amount of money.
Which dollars were that, I'm sorry?
When we got the money back from the nursing school.
Yeah, 10.3 million dollars that we got back from the state for the sale of the Bank of America building.
Yeah, that was fiscal year 26. I think you're talking about the gap, remaining gap in fiscal year 25. I explained 28 of the 37 million dollar gap. The rest of it, I would say, was just more normal timing type of differences with nothing that really stuck out to me.
I recognize it's a very small item in there, even though 12 million dollars is a lot of money in the overall scope of things. I can follow up with you later on that. I'm just trying to understand the flow.
Yeah.
The other issue is the appeals costs. I noted that you brought it up in one form or another. This is the reevaluation appeal costs. Do we know, you brought it up, I think, three times during this report as I counted as you were going along. Do you know where we are at right now? How many appeals are left? Or is this something I really need to hold and talk to our tax administrator?
We discuss it every month, the county staff does, but I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. It's early in the year, and it's difficult to kind of extrapolate early year results on that number, but it's just something that we are keeping an eye on because we are seeing appeals come in, and some of the property value is being adjusted downwards. It's just, again, something that we're monitoring, but I don't know the number off the top of my head.
It's my understanding that to do a full appeal, rather than something they could just work through existing data, is very expensive to us, the county. So each one of those appeals can cost as much as 33,000 to 35,000 per. So whatever we can do to reduce the number of appeals would help us a lot. Would you agree?
Another staff time.
Yes.
Spent on appeals. Yes, sir.
And I just want to give a shout out, kind of, you covered a lot of information, but one that stood out for me again this year is environmental management, and what a good job they're doing. I note that Joe Salaman's here in the room, and I also take it that some of this is because of this, you know, brilliant piece of equipment that we bought, the shredder, which is reducing the amount that's going into the landfill and making our operations out there much more efficient. So congratulations, Joe.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Eric, I just want to say to you, I appreciate you very much. I feel confident and comfortable knowing that you are our chief financial officer. You always have the answers to the questions that we pose to you, both online and offline. The numbers are the numbers. I feel confident that they are correct, however, because you are there. Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to just ask again, the money that was taken out of the fund balance this past budget year was put back in, correct, from the sale of that property?
It was, yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just a comment, thank you, Eric. A very thorough presentation, as always, and thank you for always answering my questions. So, and I have a lot of them, so, but you keep us very well informed, so thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next is presentation by MEP EnviroMed, Environmental Regarding Gasification and Solid Waste Purchase. Presenter Stuart Cook and Neil Williams. And Mr. Joe Salaman first.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. The county has received an unsolicited proposal from MEP EnviroMed Environmental to purchase municipal solid waste from the county's landfill for use in a gasification facility. Their facility would be independently constructed, permitted, and operated by the company. Based on research by county staff, this type of project has the potential to extend the life of the landfill if the facility proves successful with minimal financial risk to the county. However, we have not identified any comparable gasification facilities that process the amount of municipal solid waste being proposed, so the likelihood of success remains uncertain. I do think this could be a potential solution for the landfill, but I'm not recommending for or against this specific proposal. More than anything, my focus is on exploring alternatives to solid waste stream management with the goal of preserving our existing permitted landfill space. That's my priority, and I believe considering all possible alternatives, not just one is prudent at this juncture. Today's presentation is part of that ongoing effort to evaluate and understand what options may exist to help extend the life of our landfill. As staff, we will take your direction on any next steps you would like to take in that exploration, inclusive of a more extensive search for waste diversion alternatives for the board to consider. With that, I'll turn it over to Stuart Cook and Neil Williams with MEP EnviroMed Environmental. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
As I listened this morning to the presentations that have been made in sustainability economics and the PFOS issues, it's a good segue into the conversation that I've come here today to talk about. Every day, New Hanover County deposits over 1,000 tons of waste into the landfill, producing greenhouse gases equal to more than 90,000 cars on the road. Landfill sits beside the Cape Fear River, one of North Carolina's most eco-sensitive waterways, the same river that supplies our drinking water. Stormwater runoff can carry PFOS and other toxins into the river or into the groundwater, and the county goes to great expense and effort to try to see that those don't happen. But removing this from the environment is even a better answer. As Joe said, I'm Stuart Cook, owner of EnviroMed Environmental. I've lived and worked in this community all my life. My triplets went to school at Laney. My brother Marty Cook is here to support this project today. He's been a county commissioner in Rutherford County for 18 years now. His wife's on the school board. I'm here today to ask you to consider a contract to take your landfill garbage waste stream and convert it into energy, and to demonstrate that there is a better, smarter way forward than landfilling garbage. As we all recognize, the county landfill is nearing capacity. Back in 2015, it was reported that the landfill had roughly 90 years of life remaining. Now, due to population growth and storm debris, the life expectancy has dropped to about 23 years, a 67-year drop in just 10 years. One bad storm season can wipe out what's left. The current landfill is already the highest elevation point in New Hanover County. Expanding the landfill is nearly impossible, according to North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality Standards. And trucking waste to distant landfills would be extremely expensive with wide, with open-ended costs that would burden the county for decades to come. It's time for a cleaner, smarter solution. If I can get this. Our partnership, MEP EnviroMed, unites three proven organizations: Mobile Environmental Power, referred to as MEP, Vanderwall Engineering, and EnviroMed Environmental. MEP principles have designed and built multiple large-scale systems for waste management, including hundreds of recycling and waste water treatment projects and more than 100 landfill operations. Their teams include, their team includes the former commander of the United States Corps of Engineers, who's directed thousands of engineers for years on major federal projects around the world. Vanderwall Engineering is a world-recognized, publicly traded power and energy firm that has been in business for over 70 years with billions of dollars in completed energy projects. And locally, I've spent over 30 years developing historic and environmentally sensitive projects throughout Wilmington and coastal North Carolina. All of our projects have been environmentally friendly and successful. We have never had an unsuccessful project. Together, we combine global management, engineering expertise, and energy production with local accountability and knowledge to deliver a solution that's proven and practical. Our answer is gasification of waste. We are joined today by Dr. Neil Williams, founder and head of engineering of MEP, Ph.D., Cal Berkeley engineer, and one of the world's foremost experts in gasification and waste management, and a former professor at Georgia Tech. Gasification is not burning. There's no flames. There's no smokestacks. Waste is heated in a closed system at over 1,000 degrees Celsius with almost no oxygen. The temperature, at that temperature, everything from plastics, organics, even PFOS and dioxins break down into its basic elements, hydrogen, carbon, and oxygen. The result is a clean synthetic gas refined through a fisher throat process into ultra-clean renewable diesel fuel. More than 95% of all waste is recycled or converted, leaving less than 5% to be returned to the landfill. There's no odors, there's no visible emissions, there's no wastewater discharge, all the waste is processed indoors. In simple terms, gasification turns our waste problem into clean energy and renewable Landfill waste serves as a feedstock that converts into refuge-derived fuels, also known as RDF. The fuel we used in our gasifiers, where our team has not yet built a facility processing 1,000 tons a day of only municipal solid waste, we have decades of experience converting every type of waste into RDF and clean energy, including municipal solid waste, hazardous waste, agricultural waste, medical waste, plastics, construction debris, and sewer sludge. Across those projects, we've transferred waste into RDF by removing recyclables, drying and refining the remainder into a stable, energy-rich fuel. The chemistry is the same regardless of the waste source, whether it's municipal, agricultural, or industrial, which is why our technology scales safely to meet New Hanover County's needs. Our gasifiers are modular and already processing waste successfully around the world. Gasification of waste is not new. There are over 100,000 systems operating worldwide, including here in the United States. Other nations have been more forward-thinking than the United States, which is now catching up creating energy from waste instead of landfilling it. That's why gasification of municipal solid waste is now supported by the United States Department of Energy, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Air Quality Division, and solid waste divisions for New Hanover County. We're not introducing an experiment. We're bringing in a globally proven, federally-supported technology with that team experience in New Hanover County's waste stream. The system is proven, not experimental. For more than 180 years, gasification has been a trusted method for converting organic material into clean energy, used here in the United States since 1850s. Modular gasifications, like the ones we'll be using, have been reliable in operating across our country for over 45 years. It includes a comprehensive sorting and recovery facility, so no citizen no longer has to separate their waste for recycling. We do that for them. It is a complete, modern approach to recycling and waste management. Every recycling item is captured, and 100% of recyclable material is either reused or recycled into clean energy production. The system is fully self-contained, no wastewater, no runoff, no contamination. What remains is inert ash that is reused in concrete and road-based. Air emissions are about 100 times lower than the federal standards, making this one of the cleanest waste energy systems in existence. You'll find refuge-derived fuel RDF gasification systems throughout the nation and around the world, providing clean energy and reliable waste reduction. This project isn't just good for the environment, it's good for New Hanover County's economy. It is completely self-funded. The county invests nothing. We also pay a host fee to the county for every ton of waste processed. We ask for no land. We ask for no incentives. The county already collects millions of dollars a year from waste haulers, and we're not asking for any of those funds. The county keeps that money, the revenue stays here. Our facility will cut landfill operational costs by over two-thirds, saving millions of dollars each year. It will, we also create over 200 full-time jobs, training local residents to become skilled, well-paid workers, pumping approximately $26 million annually into the local economy. These long-term positions will boost housing, retail, and service growth across the region. New Hanover County gains financial strength, job creation, and a cleaner future, a zero cost to taxpayers, and your garbage is no longer filling up your landfills. If anything were to happen to us at any time for any reason that we can no longer perform, you still have full control of your landfill. Nothing changes. You still continue to be able to operate just exactly as you do today. So there is no loss, no downside, absolutely no risk to the county. In closing, New Hanover County leadership has already shown the courage to embrace forward-thinking ideas, like your decision to bring state-of-the-art approach to drinking water quality. This project brings the same forward-thinking approach to another critical environmental issue, which is waste management. It's a chance for the county to lead again, proving that environmental protection and economic strength can go hand in hand. Our team is ready to move forward immediately, and we respectfully ask for consideration of our proposal, so we can bring these benefits to the citizens of New Hanover County. I am glad to answer any questions that you may have about this presentation, and if there are any technical questions about gasification, our past experience, our team's qualification, or where gasification has been used to address municipal solid waste, Dr. Neil Williams can expand on those areas and provide detailed responses. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your commitment to the furtherance of the environmental protection for New Hanover County.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cook, thank you for your presentation, and Joe, thank you for vetting this out and bringing this proposition to us. I think your point that you made is a very important one, which is that we should be looking at all of the potential options that are out there, and I greatly appreciate you doing this exploratory work. My initial reaction is that this sounds great, sounds like a very interesting proposition that I would like to explore further. I don't know that I'm comfortable at present with just moving forward with the proposition that is immediately before us without some further exploration by our staff, including the manager's office, on concepts like this. And I guess, you know, this is such a big idea, and it's got all these trappings of what sound like successful propositions for us, and I'm just hesitant without further exploration by staff and perhaps a broader scope and view of what else is out there and what's possible, that we would be acting imprudently to just move forward with the first proposal of this sort that we get without doing further exploration. So my thought at present is that I'm interested in concepts like this. I think that it is good for us to encourage people to bring good ideas to us, and I want to be open to them. I just don't want to necessarily jump on the very first proposition that comes to us without further exploration by our staff. us without further exploration by our staff. Mr. Manager, how does that strike you? Is this something that you're capable of looking into in a broader capacity, scope? Is that something that you're not prepared to answer today?
Certainly, we are prepared to answer that looking at a variety of ways to deal with our solid waste operation. We agree that burying trash forever is not the perfect solution, but I'm often uncomfortable with unsolicited proposals that have no prior operating standard. I don't believe that the county should be on the avant-garde of how to deal with solid waste. I would, if the board is open to it, propose and suggest that you look at or direct staff to create a process to solicit clearly articulated proposals. We can work as a staff to define for you what that would look like, bring it back, and ask that the board endorse and open up a solicitation for all proposals that deal with solid waste management beyond burying in the existing landfill. I think how you've described it is an appropriate way to go forward, if in fact that's something that the board is open to.
Well, my thought process is, and I think that you've described it very well, we ought to be, as much as we can, on the cutting edge of finding ways to improve our landfill, expand and extend the lifespan of our landfill, and I again want to encourage Joe and Mr. Cook for exploring this idea for us. This is, to my mind, a very good and important step in the right direction, but I don't think that we would be doing our job correctly to just accept this unsolicited proposition without further exploration and setting a framework in place for how better to evaluate notions like this and to ensure that if we're doing something big, we're really vetting it out in the highest and best way possible. So I am desirous of us continuing our efforts to find ways to better manage our landfill, extend the life of our landfill, and if this is a concept that is worthy of exploration, it sounds like it very well may be, I would like for us to do that. So I don't know where everyone else's head is at with this. I want to do something, I'm just not sure that we need or should jump on the very first thing that is presented to us in this manner.
Commissioner Scalise, I believe what we had today is simply a presentation. There's no ask for action at all, so, you know, in some ways, exactly what you're asking for is what's happening. It's a presentation. It's an idea that's put out there. But I agree with the county manager, and I think in your basic philosophy is, this is just one of many ideas that's out there. It's certainly intriguing, but it's, we're not being asked today to make any kind of, to take any kind of position on this. We're simply being presented to, I think. At least, that's how I'm interpreting.
So, Mr. Zappel, that was the staff's position, but I heard Mr. Cook clearly asked the board in his presentation to engage in some sort of further discourse. And again, I'm not prepared to recommend that, but I work at the pleasure of the board, and we'll proceed as you direct.
Well, just if I may, for clarification, we have been working with the county staff now for about a year and a half on this proposal, just so that they could vet us as far as from their foxhole. And so they sent us, they said, well, before we consider it, we want you to go to Raleigh and sit down with the Division of Environmental Quality, Air Quality Division. So we did, Neil and I went and did that. After our presentation with them, which took about an hour and a half of their asking questions of about fifteen of them in the room, they said, we believe this is what New Hanover County needs to do. Now, that was based on their understanding of what we're presenting compared to what they knew the other options were out there. Again, I'm not here to ask you to vote yes or no, but I am kind of giving you a little bit more information. Then we also went to solid waste for Division of Environmental Quality in Raleigh. They listened to our proposal, and they were skeptical, because they get all kinds of presentations all the time. After vetting ours, they recommended for New Hanover County based on their knowledge. And the big thing about here is, we don't have a lot of time, not that we need to act today, but we don't have a lot of time left at that landfill. And if, when you say go with us, it's still going to take us three years to permit it and to build it. So even though that sounds like a lot, that twenty-three years is a lot of time left on the landfill, it's really not. And so we're, we've gone through vetting processes to try to bring this, to get to this stage of the game with y'all. Now, we welcome all vetting processes because, again, hopefully you'll come to the same decision that NCDQ came to, that this is something positive for New Hanover County. And again, we're not asking anything other than your waste. If anything happens to us, you continue to run your own landfill. You own your landfill. It's the same situation. We don't want anything, any money from you. We don't, but anyway, you have the point, and we welcome moving ahead in any way you direct.
Mr. Chair, my comments are, thank you all for looking at alternatives. This sounds great. My biggest question, and I'll direct it to the manager, what I would have moving forward is, what would be the downside? What regulatory agencies would be involved with this type of process? And are there any risks to us environmentally from a facility like this? We don't want to find out down the road that we had environmental issues that we didn't look at, so that is going to be my question to you moving forward. It sounds great. I think we have to look at the future, but that is the biggest concern that I have. We're certainly looking at issues that we have now with PFOS and different things, and I don't want to find out twenty years from now we didn't ask those questions.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with our fellow commissioners to explore options. I think we should, and I think we should engage with Joe and Madeline as well, our sustainability manager. And one thing that we can all agree on is that we don't have much time, so I would like to see us diligently do that. And I mean, I don't know, we want to put a timeline on it in the next six months to a year, where we have some kind of plan or we can figure it out. Thank you for bringing this to us, Mr. Cook. I mean, options are what we need. Thank you.
Commissioner Zappel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stuart, I find it curious that you're saying that North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality is advising us to accept this technology. Do you have that in writing? Because I don't believe we have received anything from them that says you guys need to do this, meaning New Hanover County.
And that may be, that may be a strong terminology.
Good.
And I appreciate the question. What they did was, they started skeptical. They brought everybody from all facets of their organization to a meeting that took three months to set up. And we all had a large room, and they took us through the soup to nuts about what we're proposing for New Hanover County. Based on that meeting, they said, this sounds great, especially for an application like New Hanover County. Now, I don't want to read into further comments from that, but they welcome calls from New Hanover County, because they like what they heard.
Stuart, just a follow-up question. I know I brought this up at the agenda review last Thursday. Are there other municipalities or counties in North Carolina or the United States that are processing eleven hundred tons per day with this, with gasification?
And to best answer that question, if I could ask Dr. Williams to come up for a minute and refer specifically to where this specific technology has been used under these specific types of circumstances.
The largest facility in the world that uses gasification is six thousand tons a day. It's in Dubai. And the largest facility that goes from gasification to synthetic fuel, which is similar to what we're proposing for you, is in Spain, and they're doing about twelve hundred seventy tons per day. Okay?
Is there anything in the United States or North Carolina?
The U.S. is a little behind the rest of the world, primarily because about ten years ago, we had a collapse in the synthetic fuel market, where the price of diesel fuel went to ninety-two cents a gallon, and it wiped out the market. So it's taken a few years for it to recover. The largest in the U.S. or in North America, there are several facilities in the six hundred to seven hundred eighty ton per day range.
And you say North America. Is that in the United States or any in North Carolina?
Both the United States and Canada.
I see. Are there any facilities in North Carolina?
There are no facilities in North Carolina that are similar to this that have been constructed yet. There are some that are under consideration, but haven't been constructed at this time.
Thank you, Doctor. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Stuart, another quick question, something I brought up before about the agenda review, identifying where the facility would be actually located. Would it be in New Hanover County?
We are, we are talking to two locations in New Hanover County on the 421 corridor. We're talking to one in just over the line in Brunswick County. That's a larger site. One interesting thing about the Brunswick County site is it has a rail spur on the property and a gas line on the property. It's a larger facility, larger footprint, and being we have the rail spur right there at the landfill, there's a lot of symmetry between the opportunity for rail, which would also assist, but there are attributes to being the 421 corridor, too. So we've had conversations with both landowners, that we're in conversations with them now. They said, well, where are you with New Hanover County? And I said, well, we're not anywhere with New Hanover County right now. We're just in an exploratory stage with New Hanover County. So they said, well, we're not in a hurry to sell, but we are, but we, this is intriguing, entertaining. So they've got really three sites that make sense to us.
And of course, that would all be on you, your responsibility. New Hanover County would not be expected to pay for any other site, right?
It's transparently all, you wouldn't have any engagement in the land, any purchase of the land. Anything that happens on the land, that's all, that's all what we do.
So if I understand your proposal, what you really need from New Hanover County is the waste stream, and that is all. Is that correct?
Well said. Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a commitment to allow up to eleven hundred tons per day to go to your facility that I hope would be placed in New Hanover County. It makes me personally a little uneasy to have a facility that supports critical infrastructure to be placed in another county. But that, you know, that's your business proposal, just my own personal opinion.
I understand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That's all the comments I have at this point.
Anybody else? I would like to have the phone number of some of the people that y'all are doing that for now in the United States.
There's a, one place that I like a lot is a gasification facility in Durham, North Carolina, that is a demonstration plant, but it's a full-scale demonstration plant, and that you, its only feedstock is municipal solid waste. It's right in our backyard, and it would be, and they welcome anyone that would like to go see it, to go and visit it. It's a great experience to meet with the engineers, to see the facility, and you come away with a lot better, comprehensive knowledge about what this is all about.
How many tons a day does that demonstration site process?
I don't know exactly how many tons a day they do. It's TRI, is the name of the company, and they're an international operation. They're doing a big one, they're permitting a big one right now, if I'm not talking out of school, in England. Again, the U.S. is, as Neil was saying, is kind of being the caboose in this activity. It's coming along, whereas in Canada, and again, Canada, but they're doing twelve hundred and fifty tons a day up around the Toronto area of municipal solid waste. And Commissioners Apple, as we had mentioned before when we were talking, these are modular systems. These are plug-and-play. So these are independent, work independently of each other. The gasification units work alongside each other in a train. So if you have one gasification unit come off for testing, it doesn't affect the others. So they're all running three, and again, there's, I think a hundred and ten thousand active sites converting refuse-derived fuel from whatever feedstock. Operational right now, the oldest that I'm familiar with has been running continuously for over thirty years. So it's, we're using proven technology and, again, modular applications, so it's not that we're creating some rocket ship here that's not commonly in use.
Just one more quick question. I can't help but ask myself, I look at two hundred and seventy million dollars, what type of funding source? It's a lot of money to put out and ask for nothing, so where, how can we be assured that that money is obtainable?
It's a good question. We, we make our money on the sale of energy, and this is, the great thing about our system, too, is it's a chameleon. We can, we can produce low sulfur diesel fuel, which is clear, is, it's very high-premium sustainable diesel fuel. It's bringing about four dollars today in the marketplace. We, in this facility, at eleven hundred and fifty tons a day, we'd be making sixty, about fifty thousand gallons a day of that fuel at four dollars, plus we'll be making naphtha, which is about what's in your Zippo lighters. We'll make about twelve thousand tons, gallons of that a day. We'll also be making electricity. So if the market shifts, say, thirty-year contract with New Hanover County, taking their waste for thirty years, which is what I'm going to have to have in order to fund this operation, well, then, then we may be on a, on a offtake agreement for diesel fuel for a number of years, but if it becomes more lucrative to switch to sustainable aviation fuel, it's a very moderate, a very moderate.
Right. I understand that part. That makes perfect sense, but I mean the upfront cost.
Yeah. So that's how we make our money. That's how we support the investment, is the offtake agreements or the power purchase agreements on the backside. If we get a contract with you, we're able to then go to our equity partners and secure power purchase or offtake agreements, which will, which will support the investment. So we don't need your tipping fees. We don't need your incentives, because we make our money on selling energy. It is very lucrative for us.
Stuart, and I know we've kind of, you've been going at this for a little bit, but in thinking this through, why don't you simply go out to a three or four-county area and talk to private waste haulers and sign them up to deliver a waste stream to you? Why are you going through the county or through a municipality?
The county owns the landfill, and the county owns the feedstock coming into it. That's my customer. It is the guy that owns the landfill, and y'all own the landfill. Y'all own the waste stream. Without the waste stream, that's the verb in the sentence. It doesn't go anywhere without that. So the easiest course of resistance is to go to the people that already have the waste stream controlled. It's, the haulers still haul. We set up at our own expense a transfer station at your landfill, so all the waste goes to the landfill as they all do every day. So it's no different for the collection side. They still do their job. The truckers still do their job. All the other components still work as intended and as operational today. But the county then reaps the benefits economically, as we've discussed, and environmentally, as we've discussed. So, and we knew that you wouldn't pay any attention to us if you had to underwrite this with a bond referendum or with... with a bond referendum or with giving us land or doing, if you had to give me something, you weren't going to do it. And so I had to make it to where you'd want to do it. And the way that is, is to not charge you, and just to take your waste stream that you have to do something with anyway.
I think, I think I hear you saying that you need the contracts from the county to go get your equity partners.
If I don't have a waste stream, I can't move ahead. I've got to have a waste stream with the people that control the waste stream, which is you.
Okay.
Well, I'm not prepared to move forward with anything other than the directive that I suggested previously, which is, Mr. Manager, will you please continue to explore this and other options so that we can ensure that we're doing the very best we can by our citizens and our landfill?
Yes, sir. And as opposed to just independently review options, what I would like to suggest for the board is that as staff, we go back and develop a process for you to solicit openly and clearly to everybody that operates in the energy space and the distribution of solid waste, a way to propose to you formally what their options and solutions may look like. We have a history of doing that. We've done it twice in the time that I've been here. I would suggest that is the appropriate way to proceed.
Yes. Well, again, at least for me, Mr. Cook, thank you very much for bringing this idea to us. And Joe, I really do want to reiterate, thank you for doing what you do to explore ideas like this. It started a very good dialogue that I think will benefit and enure to New Hanover County in a positive way in the future.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Okay, next is committee appointments. First one is New Hanover County Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Laura King and Michael San Clemente for the regular appointment, and Kristen Freeman and Jason Holland for the alternate.
Second.
Say that one more time.
Okay.
Kristen Freeman and Jason Holland.
For the alternate.
Okay.
And then the two reappointments, Mr. Chair, Laura King and Michael San Clemente.
As regulars, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. New Hanover County Commission on African American History, Heritage and Culture.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Alicia Montgomery and Lauren Samples.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County Cooperative Extension Advisory Council, one vacancy.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Lakeisha Glassby.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County Plumbing Board of Examiners, vacancy one.
David K. Wardberry.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have one for the audience, Mr. Roger Shue. And I know that you know this, she's got three minutes.
Well, dude, you had a very full morning, so I appreciate you hearing me this morning. First, thank you Commissioners Apple for bringing the resolutions forward, and thank you Commissioners for approving them. Obviously, both have big implications for our community. On the comores piece, I wish our state's Environmental Management Commission and Chamber of Commerce would advocate, as you have, for this message. They keep stating that the rules on PFAS and 1-4 dicene are burdensome on business and taxpayers. Well, I would say that businesses and taxpayers are being negatively impacted now. Expansion of the facility makes no sense until they can take care of the issues that we currently have. And on the interbasin transfer, it's important we're able to make comments here in Wilmington. Our water supply is directly impacted, and as you know, there have been at least two times since 2000 when the water level at our supply intake has been extremely low, requiring some conservation measures, and two other times during that time when low-flow conditions contributed to algal blooms. The low-flow discharge, or 7Q10 as it's called, is harmful both to the human supply and to the ecosystems within the river. And I'd be remiss if I didn't applaud Manager Wampler's sustainability message. I've read the report, and I believe it is balanced, broad-based and forward-looking. Wish I had time to highlight several of the positives, but let me highlight one that I've championed for several years, and that is forming an advisory committee for the county. I believe this would be great for planning for you and for the community. And I would say on the waste management side, I would ask that we get the comments from DEQ about what they said to those. High-temperature paralysis-type things does get rid of a lot of the materials and the pollutants that are there, and would also allow you to mine the current cell sites as well for that. But I do want to make a comment on port deepening. The Division of Coastal Management is allowing for comments tonight. Whether you're pro or con on the deepening, there are many potential benefits and harms either way. We need to point out issues with the project and with the Corps' decision-making process if they occur, and the plans put forward in the DIS should be scrutinized. One item that is omitted in the EIS is PFAS. Even though we all know that there is PFAS in the sediment of the river, the Corps says that they can't consider PFAS because it's not a regulated chemical by EPA. However, by the time the dredging would be done from 2030 to 2036, PFAS will be a regulated chemical. And a core function of an EIS is consideration of potential harm. Therefore, they should include PFAS in the study. And since 35 million cubic yards of material will be dredged and 15 million is to be used as beneficial placement in marshes and on our beaches, we should know the content of that sediment and the potential impacts. We should also look at the mitigation scenarios too. I'll stop with that, and as always, I'll say thank you for your service and have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Anything, Mr. Shue?
Just Commissioners, we look forward to being with you at 3 o'clock.
Me too.
That's a big one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of comments to make at the end of this meeting. And as we approach the end of the year, I think it would be useful to take a moment and look ahead to some of the issues we'll be dealing with in 2026. It's coming at us very quickly. At the top of that list will be a closer working relationship and partnership with the city of Wilmington, which represents more than half of the citizens of New Hanover County, and begins this year with a newly elected council and new city manager and new police chief. We'll also be addressing a number of opportunities and challenges, among them being housing and living affordability, preserving green and open space, strengthening our relationship with the New Hanover County Endowment, making regionalism a reality, and increasing our investments in public safety and county services. Support for our public school system with an appropriate-sized school bond, and support for the expansion of pre-K classrooms. It's been a busy year, and next year will be even more so. And as a senior-most member of this board, having served now for over 10 years, I want you all to know that I would welcome the opportunity to chair the board next year and bring my experience to these challenges and the others that I know that we're going to face. So I thank you for your patience and your attention.
You have anything? Okay. You got something to say? Okay. This meeting's adjourned.